I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, being held on September 4th, 2012 at 6:00 PM at the council chambers. City Clerk, please take the roll. Councilmember Olinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Howdy.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Piper.
Here.
Mayor Jones. Here. Okay. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Dr. Bob Richards with us tonight to lead us in the pledge.
Will you please stand and join me in the pledge fleet? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll learn a little bit more about Dr. Bob tonight.
I always refuse to say the end of the line. It's my own duty protest.
If he wants to come up, we have a subject.
Please hear if he wants.
On behalf of the City Council, we would like to reiterate this. Thank you for saying the pledge, and I'd like to also thank you for all the other things you've been doing. You're welcome. The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, council members, I have two quick items. I'm pleased to announce to the council and the public that our library will begin opening on Monday, this very next Monday, from 10:00 to 2:00 every Monday. So, based on citizen feedback, we've come through and got that open. The other thing is, just a reminder, that our first of a couple different fall events is starting on September 14th and 15th and 16th with Thunder Valley Rally here in Old Town. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council? Mr. Pratt?
Other than that, along with some fellow city council members and the Vice Mayor and Mayor, I attended the League of Cities and Towns in Scottsdale, and Cottonwood looked really good. We got to see our deputy clerk make a presentation on wireless, paperless agendas, and he really did a great job. We got to see our city manager receive an award, it's a really important award, the Zimmerman Award. And our booth at the legal showcase was, as Councilmember Norman and Councilman Vice Mayor Piper can say, voted the best in a general feedback. People really liked it, and people created a lot of buzz about Cottonwood, so that was great.
It was awesome.
Yeah.
And I'd like to thank Councilmember Norman and the Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Pratt, and Casey Rooney, and Linda Collison from the chamber.
Lana.
Lana, excuse me. Lana, for working that night, working the booth. Thank you all for the time you put in.
It was fun.
Yeah. Okay, and just to elaborate a little bit, our city manager won the Gabe Zimmerman Award, as Mr. Pratt said, and this is something that is very well deserved by our city manager. It's an award that is very competitive statewide. It's really not easy to get this award. There were four of us, I think, that submitted separate nominations for him. One was Sheila Polk, myself, Kyla Allen, and David from the Holocaust group. I don't know his last.
Yeah, David Hess from the Prescott Area Jewish Community Foundation, and then Merrily Fowler, our executive director.
Did Merrily submit one also?
Yes.
Okay. And so, it's a very prestigious award, and it's in memory of Gabe, who was killed when Gabriel Giffords was shot. Her aide was killed that day, along with many other people. But, the really cool thing was, I got to sit by Gabe's mom during the luncheon, and we got to visit about him, and I found out some more about the family, which was really interesting. Also, his dad and his stepmom were sitting there. Council, you got any more? I have a little bit more to share.
What you guys said.
Okay. I was asked by Elvakuor of the O'Connor House, the Sandra Day O'Connor House, to sit on a panel about civic engagement, and I sat on that panel with former Attorney General Terry Goddard. And I got to share a lot of things about Cottonwood and how we engage our public, including our neighborhood meetings, our coffee talks, now our Facebook page, our television, televised meetings for council, our financial transparency page, our new Facebook page, which has more than 450, I think, members or likes, as you call it now. And then, it's just something that I want to continue to work on, is how to engage our public, and if I can use, I'm trying to get an intern, Mary Ann and I are working on that from the college, to maybe explore how we can all work on civic engagement, but that's not for sure yet. Those are kind of hard to come by, I think. And then, I also, I'm the Chair of the Greater Arizona Mayors Association, and we met, and they all wanted to continue to work to repeal the Elections Bill, HB 2826, and they asked for us to work on an accelerated sunset of HB 2643, and that was the one we talked about at our last meeting and a meeting or two before, which is paying extra into workman's comp, and we've had long discussions on that. And then, some of the mayors said, let's just pick a project, and we picked a project which is supporting state parks, and I couldn't have been more thrilled than to have the Gamma pick that project. So, we're working on, I guess because I'm Chair, we're working on resolutions. The mayors wanted us to create resolutions that they can take to their councils, so we'll be creating those resolutions and bringing them to our councils to get support. And so, we hope to be a voice at the legislature. If you add up all of our towns, we're a couple hundred thousand people, I think, so we feel like we might have some pull with things that are important to our citizens. And then, I wanted to let everybody know that I've been accepted to the Flynn Brown Civic Leadership Academy, which starts this Thursday, and I'll be in Phoenix most Fridays and Saturdays for the first part of November. And the Flynn Brown Academy is intended to expand the cadre of Arizonans committed to public service for the common good, particularly at the state level. The program is central to the Flynn Foundation's vision of Arizona, in part as a state known for effective civil leadership. It is also integral to the Flynn and Brown Foundations, it's a couple of foundations that combined to create this program, of improving the quality of life for future Arizonans, and reflects their long-term strategy of investing in people who will make a significant difference in the state. Also, I was awarded, from the League of Cities and Towns, my nine-year plaque, well, eight year, but I've actually been a council member for nine years now, so I thought I would share that with you. And the first book I have to read for my new Flynn Brown class is Understanding the Arizona Constitution, and it's actually pretty interesting. The last thing that I would like to share with you all tonight is to let you know that I have been following the recoveries of several of our US servicemen. Fortunately, we don't have any of these really, like, really local. They're kind of interspersed throughout the United States, but I've especially been following a couple of gentlemen. One is named Travis Mills, and the other is Taylor Morris. Taylor Morris is actually from, I think Cedar Falls in Iowa, and Daryl and Pat Dirks know him because they taught school there. I don't know if you all know Daryl and Pat, but they're involved in local food banks and feeding the hungry and all of that. But, these young men, both of these young men were injured this spring in Afghanistan, and they came home with all four limbs missing. Travis has a little girl. I'm sure you can't see that, but what I am going to request tonight from our television public and our public here is to think about trying to contribute to houses for these young men. There's a group called BuildingForAmericasBravest.org, and they are building special houses for these soldiers, and I just feel like they have done so much for us and our freedom that the least we can do is try to support them to live a better life for their future lives. So, to donate, you can always contact me, my name's on the Cottonwood website, Cottonwood City website, but you can access this information at www.BuildingForAmericasBravest.org. There's also a phone number that you can call for more information, and that is 718-987-1931. So, let's keep these young men in our thoughts and prayers as they recover from these serious injuries. Okay, so the next item is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per Arizona Revised Statutes 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak about something not on the agenda? If not, we'll close the floor to the public. The next item is Proclamation Proclaiming September 2012 as Recovery Month. Whereas, on behalf of the citizens of Cottonwood, I am pleased to join the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the Northern Arizona Regional Behavioral Health Authority, and local mental health professionals and peers in celebrating September 2012 as Recovery Month in our community, and whereas, mental health and substance abuse disorders affect millions of Americans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds, and result in significant medical, societal, and economic costs. And whereas, acknowledging September 2012 as Recovery Month offers advocates of mental health and substance abuse prevention, treatment, and recovery the opportunity to help our citizens reflect on ways to prevent mental health crises, the existence of effective treatment alternatives, and the celebratory fact that people can and do recover. And whereas, thousands of behavioral health care providers and peers have dedicated their lives to educating the public and policymakers about prevention, treatment, and recovery. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September 2012 as Recovery Month in the City of Cottonwood, and encourage all citizens to support this year's theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery. It's Worth It," by supporting men, women, and youth who have chosen the courageous path of recovery from mental health and substance abuse disorders, dated this fourth day of September 2012. And we have with us tonight Richard Daynard from the Yavapai, the Verdi Valley Guidance Clinic.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, members of the council. My name is Richard Daynard, and I'm the Community Relations Coordinator for the Verdi Valley Guidance Clinic. With me tonight are Lori Verdeer. Lori, please stand up. Lori and William, stand up, please. Lori is an adult clinical supervisor and recovery facilitator on our staff at the Verdi Valley Guidance Clinic, and William Tar is a peer support recovery specialist, also working with our consumers at the Guidance Clinic. On behalf of our staff and the management of the Guidance Clinic, our 2,000-plus enrolled consumers of Behavioral Health Services, and NARBA, the Northern Arizona Regional Behavioral Health Authority, we thank you for your support of recovery by approving this resolution. At the Verdi Valley Guidance Clinic, we believe that treatment works and recovery from serious mental illness and substance abuse disorders is possible. I would also like to invite you all and everyone in the audience to a recovery celebration, which is scheduled for Saturday, September 22nd, at Garrison Park. It's sponsored by the Verdi Valley Guidance Clinic and Matforce. There will be free food, live music, and testimony from people in recovery. It's from 11:00 AM until 1:00 PM, and we'd love to see you all stop by. There'll still be plenty of time to go to Rhythm &amp; Ribs afterwards, I think, if you can make it to that. So, thank you all very much, we appreciate it. And I would love it if we could get a photograph.
Do you want to take a picture of the council later?
Whatever's best for you all.
Well, it's up to you.
Can we get you out in front and in the council, and my friends here, etc.?
On behalf of all of our city council, we would like to show our support.
Let's all get real close together. So, John can take our picture. Thank you very much, Mayor Jones. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is Presentation of a Check to Verdi Valley Veterans Van for Veteran Transportation Services. Okay. Rudy's not here, so.
Let me go away.
I didn't know if he was going to present this item to us or not. So, we're here tonight to present a check to the Verdi Valley Veterans Van for Veterans Transportation Services. And would you like to share some information?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I want to thank you for getting this all back on track after a year or two of some confusion of delivery or whatever it was. We appreciate your support. It's desperately needed right now just because of the economy, you know? We did need a new van this year. It was, we've been awarded it, we haven't picked it up. We'll pick it up in December, and this financial support is going to be a big help in us getting that without any breaking of the bank, so. So, thank you again for your continued support for the Veterans Transportation Service, which also assists the community elderly and disabled in our community, so.
Okay. So, council, let's, if you'd like. There's the big check.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to take a picture. This is really pretty fantastic, and that's unbelievable. I'll paste this one in the damn window this weekend. Thank you guys very much. And by the way, your name will continue to be printed on the vans as a continued sponsor. Let me get the new one.
Thank you.
We're going to do our mags, but we'll have a fine artist do all of our sponsors on the back doors, so.
Great, and congratulations on the new van.
Needed it.
And you guys do the handicap deliveries and transportation.
Everywhere we can, everywhere we can. We have been, even with the, I'm sorry, I should have talked about this a little more. Even with the placing of the van service, the VTS, not BTS Incorporated, that's us. VTS is the new van placement at the Cottonwood CBOC. Jim is limited, their driver, is limited to a 60-mile radius in the Verdi Valley, and he cannot transport outside of the Verdi Valley. So, and the VA does not have a replacement driver for him when he has six days or takes two week vacations, which he's on right now, which I kind of found surprising, actually. So, it's been between me and the new van placed at the American Legion by the DAB to carry that excess that he's helped us with this last year and a half or two for the Cottonwood area. So, we're just, we're trying to work as a team with NACOG, ADOT, what sponsorships we can get, because we are all now donation-based, and our two owners at this time are the American Legion and the VFW in Camp Verdi. The local organizations are at this time no longer a part of ours, so. But you've been given all that documentation.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you again for your continued support.
You're welcome.
Can I go back there now?
Yes. It's on the oven, right?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Celebrate a day, so thanks for the telecall.
We will.
That's yours. That's yours. Thanks for the call.
You're welcome. Okay, the next item is Approval of Minutes for the Work Session of 8:14:12 and the Regular They look to find me.
Yeah, me too.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of 8:21:12.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Olinsky seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Item number nine is Unfinished Business, of which there is none. Item number 10 is the Consent Agenda, there are no items. Item number 11 is New Business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one, Resolution Number 2659, Appointing a Member to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And we have Jason Little with us tonight to present this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Parks and Recreation Staff is respectfully requesting council approval to fill a recently vacated seat due to term expiration, and it was held by Dr. Bob Richards. We, as it outlines in your council communications document, we posted in the community and we made sure that we advertised like we were supposed to, and we only received one applicant, and that was Dr. Bob Richards, and he's reapplying for a three-year seat, I believe. And if council desires to approve this item, the suggested motion is, I move to approve Resolution Number 2659, Appointing Dr. Bob Richards to fill a three-year term, which expires August 16th, 2015. And at this time, if you guys don't have any questions, I'd like to open the floor to Dr. Richards.
Okay. Dr. Richards, would you like to come up and have us grill you? As I understand it, you've been serving the past year?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
And would you like to share a little bit of information with the council and the public as to why you would like to serve?
Well, I'm very interested in Parks and Rec. I've enjoyed being on the commission for the last year. I'm kind of an outdoors person, bicyclist, hiker. I think there's a lot of opportunities to do things in the Parks and Rec Department, and I enjoy being on the Parks and Rec Commission. The Parks and Rec Commission is basically a financial oversight commission, and so we kind of keep our eyes on the expenses, the costs of running the rec center, and last meeting, we had a Scott project developer for the city come and talk about solar panels for heating the water. It was very informative. He was with us for about 45 minutes, and I must say, we grilled him pretty hard, and some of the questions he couldn't answer, which was great. But, so we're a financial oversight committee, and I think that's very important, to keep track of something that has a fairly good-sized budget and cost associated with it, and it is a, you know, for me, it's a great source of pride. I've always supported the rec center, felt it was very important to the community, and it's, I think, a good tax subsidy, you might say, for the citizens of Cottonwood and the surrounding areas as well. I think they've done a good job of managing it, Jason and Richard Fox.
I know, and the parking lot always seems to be full, so.
Yes, it does.
I think it gets used a lot.
Yes.
Mr. Pratt?
The interior's cool, too.
Yes.
You know, considering Dr. Bob's service to the city always shows interest in what's going on, considering he wasn't the only person to apply, I once again, because there's a rule at every meeting, we all have to say this, this isn't our area.
Well, are there any comments from the public on this item? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2659, Appointing Dr. Bob Richards to fill a three-year term, which expires August 16th, 2015.
Second.
Okay, Linda raised her hand, she didn't get a chance to do either one. It's okay, next time. Okay, so, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Olinsky seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries, and congratulations. We'll keep you hard at work. Madam Mayor, would you like me to read the resolution? Oh, you would like to read the resolution. City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2659 by title only. Resolution Number 2659, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Robert D. Richards a member of the City of Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Commission, and establishing his term of office. Madam Mayor. Thank you. Item number two, Ordinance Number 587, Amending the Zoning Map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, for a parcel of land totaling approximately 8.060 acres, located at 533 North Willard Street, APN 40642007, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of R1, Single Family Residential, to PAD, Planned Area Development, and this is a first reading. Mr. Gaylord.
Mayor and council, once again, this is a request to rezone approximately eight acres located along the east side of Willard Street, just up the hill here from Lyons Park. This is Old Town up here, this is Willard Street and North Main Street. This is the eight acres formerly owned by the Catholic Church. The site itself is encumbered by a variety of very significant sloping areas, as you may know. I know you're all very familiar with it, it's located very close by. It includes presently the old Catholic Church built in 1925, and until very recently, a larger administrative building that was located to the rear that was recently destroyed in a fire. The site is surrounded by, on two sides, by R1 zoning. To the south is occupied by the Cottonwood Elementary School. To the west, you have a series of older residences, and to the north, you've got the CR District, residential uses. Areas to the east are zoned multifamily, but are vacant at this time. The applicants are proposing to redevelop the site as a 10-bed hospice facility, located basically on the same site as where the old Catholic Church is. What they're proposing is to take the Catholic Church and move it somewhat east and south of its present location, that means corner of the site, basically over here. What they want to do is make use of the flattest part of the site that's presently occupied with the development of the new structure. There are a couple of other building pads that have been highlighted in the proposal to the Planning and Zoning Commission recently, located here as well as the back of the site. They are not part of this proposal, but they have been called out as possible additional building sites as time passes. If that, if that happens, we would take that as a separate application, as a kind of an amendment to the planned area development. We highlighted a couple of issues in the review of this with the Planning and Zoning Commission, one having to do with the preservation of access to the school site. There's a secondary access to the school that's shared in this location. The school actually owns about 60 feet property here that, when you're out there, it looks like it's part of the church site. It's got pavement on it, it's basically, it's used for, you know, shared parking between the two facilities. I think mostly when folks are out there to watch the ballgames over here, they're parking out here. The, the site proposal preserves that access, as well as provides for some additional landscaping of that area. The request was, a community meeting was held on July the 9th to kind of air the request. Public notices were sent out to everybody that owns property within 300 feet of this area. All these folks were notified. The community meeting was very lightly attended, we didn't get much of a turnout at planning and zoning either. Have not received many comments on the proposal in general. We believe it conforms to the city's general plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of the request, subject to stipulations that are highlighted in ordinance 587. I've got a few pictures of where it is, while I'm going to broadcast the request. First of all, this is the site located on kind of the top of the grade overlooking Old Town and Willard Drive. And this is the, kind of, this slope, again, looking at Willard Drive. One of the things we've highlighted in this review is the old hill slope.
George, could you get the microphone closer to you?
Sure. Sorry. They're going to provide some additional landscaping in this location. The landscaping plan that's submitted as part of this proposal addresses primarily the flatter upper areas of the site. The remainder of the property would be held out as a kind of a natural area. Think I'm going to have some technical difficulties there. P. F. L. Yeah. The applicants, Rick Peterson with the Verde Valley Medical Center, and Duane Ray with Moorfield Ray Architects are here. They have a presentation for you as well this evening. They have the elevations of the structure, which is a very contemporary design, and basically, the function of that is to kind of contrast the historic nature of the church building that would be retained on-site. Madam Mayor, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Counsel, are you done with your presentation?
Yeah, I don't think my slides are working.
Okay, can we please turn on the lights?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, do you have questions? Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, is it, is there a cost to, is sewer already set up and water lines already installed? Or would there be an extra cost for all that?
I believe this is hooked up to sewer.
Okay.
It probably happened with the construction of the newer administrative building to the rear, but I could be wrong about that. That actually never came up, but there's sewer in the street.
Okay.
I did notice that it says, "All outdoor lighting will meet the dark sky ordinance." And in one place where I was reading, it talked about one of the lights facing up or something. Do you want to, if it all complies with the dark sky ordinance, there wouldn't be any problem then, because...
Yeah, there was some uplighting on the building. We just highlighted that to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There is an allowance for unshielded lighting by code, but we try to avoid the uplighting altogether.
So what's the status of the uplighting?
The recommendation was for them to meet the code. We're going to ask them for some alternate cut sheets on the, on the lighting.
Okay, because that's pretty important with our dark skies and, and our telescopes and everything that are just right there on the edge of the Verde Valley that count on dark skies to do their work, so. Any other questions? Mr. Ilinski?
I did have some concerns about the church, but I'll wait for their presentation and ask those later.
So, are we going to have a presentation from the architect?
Yes.
Okay.
My slides aren't working. I think I pulled the, the home drive out and it's hanging.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, Mayor Jones and City Council, on behalf of the Verde Valley Medical Center, we're very appreciative of your consideration of this zoning request. It's probably been about six or seven years that the Verde Valley Medical Center Board has had great interest in developing a hospice house and bringing a facility like that not only to Cottonwood, but to the Verde Valley. Currently, there is not a hospice facility in the entire valley. And obviously, there's a need for it, and really, probably in the last three years, there's been more of a focus on developing this facility. We've looked at several different pieces of property around the Verde Valley, specifically in Cottonwood. All of them, where there were some very good options, none of them really jumped out at us until we had an opportunity to look at the property owned by the Catholic Diocese, and we were able to work with them. Both Verde Valley Medical Center and the Catholic Diocese share a not-for-profit mission statement, and we were able to work with them and purchase this property. And we feel that, obviously, we all know the property very well, and just looking at that site, it lends itself to this type of a use. We've strategically located this facility on the bluff to make, take full advantage of the opportunity for views as you look to the river valley, Cottonwood, beyond the Sedona Red Rocks. So we've, we've positioned the building in that respect. And to that, the building design, as you, you enter the building, you're going to notice it's a radius building, it sits right on the edge of the bluff. There are 10 rooms, and each of those 10 rooms has its own private patio, and you'll be able to take advantage of those views, not only from the common areas, but from each of the individual patient rooms as well.
Going to have a beautiful view, that's for sure.
It is. It really does. And we think this is going to be a project that is going to be, one, is a need in the community, it's going to be well-received, and it'll be here for many, many years, just as the church has served that site, this hospice facility will serve this site also. And one of our, what we'd like to do is maintain the historic church. We realize it was set up in the community for that church. It sits pretty much where we need to build, or where we'd like to build, but we think by moving it off to the side, we'll still be able to keep that sense of community intact. What we will eventually use that church for is to be determined. There's a lot of what-ifs kind of floating out there. It may serve as an administrative building, it could be a meeting facility, it could remain as a chapel. So those are things that were yet to be considered.
And I'll have to say that I'm so thrilled that you're attempting to save that, that building, it's just such a part of the community.
We agree, we agree.
So thank you. Go ahead, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Any questions?
How will you move that building and make sure it stays in one piece?
We've contacted a very well-known building mover here in the state of Arizona, and he was familiar with the site, because he had looked at the church once before, actually, about five, five years ago. And it was, you know, he didn't think it was that big of a building, and it looks that big of a building to us. But then he also was able to look across from that site to the school bus bar, and I think he said that, that building's 84 by 130, and he goes, "We moved that there 10 years ago." So he's, he's very experienced in this, and he thinks the process will take about three and a half weeks. We're looking for him to be on-site to start mobilizing, I believe it's the week of September 24th. So we're proceeding with that.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, do you know, is all the infrastructure for the sewer and water installed there already?
I believe it does have city water, but I don't believe it is on city sewer.
Okay, and would that be in the plans to connect to the sewer?
Absolutely.
And the hospital would be responsible for paying for that?
Like any other arm.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Ilinski?
I, too, am really glad you're going to save the church. I love your design, I think it's perfect location for it, and I'm just glad that you have a solid plan to, to move the church. When I read through the literature, I, I read that it was your intention to move it, and I thought maybe that was a little too gray, and I'm just glad to hear that you, you do plan on hiring a professional to move it. And I think, I think that you'll be glad you did, and the community will be very glad that you did save that church.
Thank you.
And a very good friend of mine and my husband's was Red Matthews, and as I understand, he was part of the reason that you're going to be able to do this.
The, the monies that have been raised over a period of years will pretty much cover the cost of developing this facility, and hopefully, there'll be some remaining to continue to help operations as we go forward.
Right, I know I had been asked to meet with Christine Blyker, who is, at the time, she was with the foundation?
She still is, yes.
Okay, and she was talking about, you know, that they had the money to build this building, but that they would be needing to look for funds to help operate it, because you plan to serve as many people as you can with the services, so I appreciated that. But I think it's a beautiful building, and it's well-planned, of course, you guys wouldn't do anything halfway over there. And it'll be a beautiful facility, the natural lighting should be, I would think, comforting. The families will have a kitchen, it sounds like, from what I read.
Yeah, there's a, a large entry foyer as you walk in, and that continues all the way through the center of the building. And there will be a kind of a very nice family gathering area, which includes a kitchen. Where does your family like to gather, and where they feel very comfortable, in that kitchen area? And that'll be an opportunity for, really, the friends and families of the residents to maybe can gather there, they can provide support for each other. So that's a, it's a nice area. We've looked at numerous other facilities across the state, and kind of gleaned out what they said that they did well, and what they really liked, and maybe some things that they probably would change if they had that opportunity. So we've, we've looked at other facilities in that respect. And as you continue to go through this open foyer, we come to a climatized patio, and then if you go farther, there'll be an outdoor patio, that'll be open to the public as well, so.
When, when do you plan to have it completed?
With your approval, we would like to have a groundbreaking ceremony in October on the site, and we're looking at probably about a 10-month construction period.
Okay. So counsel, any more questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Norman?
In doing the building, building the building, is that going to provide opportunities for local jobs?
Very, very good question, and I would, I would say yes. We really, really strive to look at using local contractors, local vendors, in everything we do, in everything.
Any comments from the public on this item? If not, it's the first reading, so, yes, Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to thank you for saving my old church.
I think that was really important to the community as a whole.
We, we understood that.
Yeah. Okay, so it's, it's the first reading, so City Clerk, would you please read ordinance number 587 by title only?
Ordinance 587, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, for a parcel of land totaling approximately 8.060 acres, located at 533 North Willard Street, APN 40642007, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of R1, single-family residential, to PAD, Planned Area Development. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And the next reading, George, will be?
Eighteenth.
The 18th, okay, so this will come back for a second and final reading on September 18th, and the public will have another opportunity to comment. Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item under new business is item number three, disbandment of the city's senior commission. Iris Dobler will present this item.
Madam Mayor, council members, I feel like this is all I come up here for anymore, is to disband an organization. I told Doug today I feel like a family wrecker or a home wrecker. It is requested that council consider disbanding the senior commission. If the council desires to approve this item, the suggested motion is, I move to disband the senior commission. Senior commission was created by council back in 2008 to promote, support, and enhance the lives of senior citizens. The current members of the senior commission, at their last meeting in July, recommended that I talk to the mayor and discuss the possibility of disbanding the senior commission, because quite a few of, most all of the members felt like the commission itself really was not doing anything. I looked back in previous minutes and found that the commission really had not done any projects of its own. It has supported other things in town, it has supported the senior center in town, it has volunteered for projects like that, but all of those things could be done individually by any of the senior commission members. So they felt that most everything that they thought of that might be done is either already being done or could be done by a local organization, such as the senior center, or some other, one of the NACOG groups, or something like that. And the justification is that we didn't feel that we were providing service to the community, and that really, the senior commission was not needed.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I, again, I, I think this is probably a no-brainer, considering all the redundant organizations already doing work. But I do notice at the final, it says the second and final reading, so is this a first reading tonight? It doesn't say so in the agenda, but at the very end, it, it does say that the second and final reading would be at...
I got some of these dates from Mary Ann, so hopefully, she can guide us in that.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Pratt, I don't, I don't think there's an ordinance attached to this item, I think this is really directing staff to come back to you with an ordinance, so there would be a first reading and a second reading required, this is not either.
So to disband one, you have to have an ordinance to do that?
Well, if it's created by ordinance, and the senior commission is, is part of the city code, so if we're to repeal it, we need to do that.
Okay.
Okay, because it says the second reading will be October 2nd, would that then be the first reading, really? It's at the very end of...
It would be September 18th.
Okay.
Okay. So, I agree, I think that, you know, on the recommendation of the commission, we do have the Verde Valley Senior Center that just really does so much in the community for seniors. We have NACOG. I know that something that I had hoped the commission would explore was having the resource person that would, you know, give out information about senior services, but if you think about it, NACOG does that, and there's a toll-free 800 number anybody can call to find out services for seniors, so that's already being done.
And the senior center said they're going to start that, that they have received some funding now. We were not aware of that until shortly before our July meeting, so.
Right, and as far as the event that you have, the primetime fair, as you said, the commissioners recommended that they could keep doing that.
Right.
But why do you need a commission, you know, an official commission to do that?
Yeah, the commission didn't put it on, it was put on by the newspaper... It was put on by the newspaper, the chamber, and the senior center, and we simply helped set up and take down and get ready for it.
Which they can call upon you to do that also. And also, I mean, if we needed, you know, a body of people to talk about this in the future, it wouldn't have to be an official commission. It could be like our bicycle commission that we have, and it could be, you know, impromptu. And sometimes you can get more done that way anyway than having to go through all of the minutes and agendas. And Councilmember Norman, I guess I would ask her advice because she's been on this commission since its inception, and she's worked really hard. She's taken all of the minutes. Because when we created this, we didn't have any more staff to send to meetings to take minutes and prepare agendas. And so she's been very dedicated, very dedicated. And so I would ask her opinion of what she thinks we should do.
Well, I agree. It had gotten to the point that when we would leave a meeting, I would think, what are we accomplishing? Why are we meeting? So, and with all of them saying the same thing, I think it's just kind of having meetings for no reason.
And I just want to be sure that, you know, everybody in the community knows that we're very, very concerned about senior issues and very supportive of senior issues. We donate to the Verde Valley Senior Center, you know, and to ensure that people have meals and food and congregate meals, and we're very dedicated. So it's, you know, we're still on the path of caring about seniors, making sure they get their services. But I think the senior center can do it and NACOG, yes.
And I did miss the very last meeting. I wasn't feeling very well that afternoon. But from the minutes and from talking to Iris, it sounds like the people that have been on the commission are still very interested in volunteering any way they can wherever they're needed.
Great. So they'll still be there just as they always have been since 2008.
Don't have to have the commission for them to do that.
Right. And they can meet whenever they want. I mean, if they want to meet with the primetime fair planning group, you know, there'll be those opportunities too. And I know Elaine always needs help at the senior center, always. And volunteers make up a huge part of her staff, really. Any comments from the public on this item? Hang on, let me get over there. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Being the youngest man here, I think I should...
Mr. Ilinski?
Do we need a motion or not? Or is it just we've given recommendations?
You can give staff, CM staff, and I'm willing to...
It says suggest a motion.
So the path is a motion, so you can certainly vote if you direct staff.
But we don't really have to vote either. We can just direct you. Well, why don't, that's easier. Because we'll be taking official votes when we change the ordinance. So we would just direct you to bring it back on the 18th and for more public comment and a vote. Or no, a first reading, and then a vote the next time it comes back. Okay, so thank you very much. And Iris, thank you too. You were the chair this year, and we appreciate your hard work. Okay, the next item is adoption of city's water strategies, and Mr. Whitver is here to present that to us tonight.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, members of council, as you can see, I'm the popular guy in the room tonight as usual. As you're all aware, water is perhaps one of the most valuable resource, one of the most valuable resource the city has.
You lost one.
Believe me. And with growth anticipated to continue occurring, it's imperative that the city begin not only developing but adopting water policies and strategies that are designed to ensure the sustainability of the resources. The seven, I don't know what you want to call them, the seven water management policies/strategies that you have before you that you had an opportunity to review were developed specifically to provide guidance and a vision for the city's current and future activities as they relate to the management and development of water resources as we progress along on our merry way in the many wonderful adventures in water. What we're here to do tonight is I'm hoping that the city will adopt this formally, and we can run through this if you so desire, or we can entertain any kind of questions that you may have related to this. It's up to you with regards to what we ultimately end up doing with this.
Will the document be on our website?
The document, yes, we will post the document on the website, absolutely.
Counsel, do you have any questions about this water strategy? Mr. Ilinski?
No, I read through and I was impressed with it, and I'm proud of it.
Yeah, this is kind of the first step in a multifaceted process that we've envisioned for this. On the 11th, I believe it's the 11th, is when the next work session is, where we're bringing forth a water conservation consideration for you all to begin discussions. And ultimately, out of that, we're hoping that we come up with a rather comprehensive water conservation program that will touch on all facets of conservation, not just incentivize, but also education and outreach mandatory via policy and ordinance and so on. So this is kind of the first process, or first phase in that process. And it's kind of designed to lay things out and lay direction out for the city, to provide a vision for the city in terms of what it intends to do with regards to water resources, planning, management, and development in the future.
Well, I know this is something that I'm really excited about. And like you said, it's a first step. And I think it goes along with, the council did ask staff to, in our strategic planning session, to begin work on our integrated water management plan. So I would assume this is sort of like a first step of that.
Absolutely.
And I'm looking forward to the reading about the conservation plan. I guess you guys have been working hard on that.
Yes, it's ready to go.
And so we appreciate that. As I understand it, Cottonwood, since Cottonwood purchased the water companies in 2004, was it 2004? Or '06, when we started?
I think it started, I think it's actually completed in '05, beginning of '06.
Due to our conservation efforts that we have already implemented, along with our drought plan and all of those things, we actually pump one-third less out of the aquifer than we did when our companies were privately owned, is what I understand. So we're moving forward with our fiscal accountability, and I love the way it talks about the Verde River and preservation of the river. And it talks about water rights and portfolios. So it's a very exciting time, I think. The value of opportunity. So I'm very excited about this. And Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I think, I really think this is a valuable one, too. To get approved, it does show we're proactive. It does show we're being realistic. After all, we do live in a desert, and there is a drought, and it's very important for our future plans. So yeah, I think it's a great first step. We'd be crazy not to approve this.
Would you call it one of those NBs?
This is another no-brainer.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the council and the public? Mr. Pratt?
I move to adopt the city's water strategies as presented.
Second. Mr. Pratt made the motion. Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Whitver.
Very good job.
Thank you. It was really, really well-written. Thank you for all your work. It's awesome. Okay, claims and adjustments?
I move we pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Councilmember Norman made the motion. Councilmember Ilinski seconded it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Second.
The mayor made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor? Aye? For adjourn.
I want to go see if there's gas.